So there is no one for public comment, correct?
I didn't receive anything.
All right. All right, it's seven o'clock. I'll call the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Dunn County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Are you gonna bring that up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Canada, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
All right, thank you. Um, we'll have the clerk call a roll.
Supervisor Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor Hedlund.
Here.
Supervisor Score.
Here.
Supervisor Steen.
Here.
Supervisor Zahn.
I am here.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Maves.
Here.
Supervisor Quinn.
Here.
Supervisor Rogers.
Here.
Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Cromry.
Here.
Supervisor Calabrese.
Here.
Supervisor Keeter.
Here.
Supervisor Vogel.
Here.
Supervisor McCullough.
Here.
Supervisor Story. Supervisor Stories.
Here.
Unmute. Supervisor Vandermeulen.
Here.
Supervisor Niehoff.
Here.
Supervisor Morehouse.
Here.
Supervisor Kennedy. Oh, sorry. Supervisor Tripp.
Here.
Supervisor Proctown.
Here.
Supervisor Jensen.
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Lino.
Here.
Supervisor Hartong.
Here.
Chairman Bartlet.
Here. We have no presentation of petitions, memorials, or other communications. But at this time, I'd like to acknowledge, I think maybe you all know for sure, but we lost a fellow board member yesterday, Sarah Kennedy. And she served Dunn County for the majority of her adult life. I don't know how long she was at the neighbors, but I know she was there an awfully, awfully long time. And she was a board member for nine years. After she retired, she, she served as a union representative. She just served Dunn County greatly, and she's gonna be, she's gonna be missed greatly. And so I have just a, a few seconds of silence in memory of Sarah. All right, thank you. And as we get information, Mr. Miller will be sending that out to everybody. At this time, we haven't seen any information on, on anything that, for the service or anything, what they'll do. So moving on to, we have no appointments. We have no public comment. We're down to eight already. Consideration of resolutions, reports, ordinances from the standing committees. A is from the Planning Resource Development Committee. It's an ordinance repealing and recreating Chapter sixteen of the Dunn County Code of Ordinances. This is the first reading. I need a motion for this. Supervisor Quinn moves.
Second it.
Supervisor Anderson seconds. And speaking to this, Supervisor Quinn, you wanna do that?
Yeah, a couple of short comments. So we have been working on this ordinance for, it's been a year, and we've been over it and over it a number of times. Survey manager Tom Carlson has put hours and hours of work as have corporate counsel in redefining and reshaping. And basically, the ordinance repeals the previous land division ordinance and replaces it with a new ordinance with a number of standards that deal with land division, some environmental and land use provisions. It is of most interest to those towns that are unzoned and that zone towns have, are, are sort of governed by some of the, by county zoning rules. But the unzoned towns, this sort of defines how, how, in some ways, how they are gonna handle land division. And that's of particular interest to those towns in Dunn County that are, that are growing, that are in some of the areas that are actually gaining population, and there's increasing number of land divisions. So we are, the committee was pleased that we had a public hearing, we had input, and we also had some concerns raised by local officials in the unzoned townships. And we were able to, to bring them into our discussion and take their advice and shape what we think is a, a good compromise position that is acceptable to those townships and what makes, which provides landowners in those towns with the same essential rights that other landowners in the county have. So it's a, we think it's a good, a good ordinance. It's been, it's been clearly discussed and reviewed throughout the county. And this is the first reading, but we would like the committee to, the board rather, to take action on it at our next meeting.
Are there any questions? Other discussion? If not, as I've said at all these meetings, I can only so, see so many people on my screen. There's always seems to be, so if somebody has something to say, please speak, raise your hand or speak up. Supervisor Steen.
Yes, did we approve the minutes?
No, I'm gonna go back to that in a minute. As soon as we're done with this, I skip.
All right.
Any other discussion on this? If not, we will be taking action on this ordinance next meeting in January. And now I apologize, I did skip over the minutes. Andrew straightened me out on that. So I need a, a motion for the November ninth minutes. Supervisor Steen moves and Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Any discussion on the minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Eight B. From the Executive Committee, a resolution amending Resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-two adopting the twenty twenty-two property levy. And I need a motion for this. Supervisor McCullough moves. Supervisor Johnson seconds. And speaking to this, Andrew, would you like to do it again?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Bartlet. So the amended resolution before you, as you could see, if you review your November packet, there was a change to the town, village, and city taxes on the city illegal tax certificate chargeback. What happened was, the previous county treasurer received a statement from the court hearing that certain entities had felt that they had been overcharged in taxes, and the courts ruled in their favor to the tune of around fifty-two thousand dollars. That money was paid out in January of twenty twenty, and thus needs to be apportioned out to the municipalities. This was caught after the levy resolution had originally been drafted and approved because, through the diligent work of our Dunn County Treasurer. It was a communication from the previous treasurer that was not shared with the staff. So it was caught by our current treasurer, and then there was also a component, a small modification to special charges. On this original November levy, Res- Resolution Number sixty-two, there was a two hundred and seventy dollar charge for special charges. That actually is supposed to be state special charges. That is information that is communicated to the county clerk's office and then relayed to the CFO. There was a terminology difference. There are special charges in the treasurer's world that are, that were included for around two hundred and seventy dollars, which was actually for a drainage district. So there was a modification that needs to be made for that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Are there any questions? Anne.
Well, I was just note, I was just noticing that in the text, it says fifty-two, two eighty, but in the dollar amount down below, it's fifty-two, three twenty-nine. So is, should those two numbers match, or is there a little bit in the town villages and city taxes?
That's a good question.
I don't know.
Up in the whereas, it's fifty-two, two eighty, and down underneath the town, village, and city to taxes for, it's fifty-two, three twenty-nine.
That's combined, no?
You caught that, and nobody caught it at executive. So I'm, I'm impressed. Very good, Anne.
I was an accountant in a prior life.
Oh, that explains it.
Yes, it should be the same.
I'm not sure that it should, but I, I can pull up the creep in the store.
If, if I may recommend, procedurally, we can acknowledge that this is a scrivener's error. We will make sure that the corrected notice is on this version that is signed by the county board chair.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I think I have a res, I think I have, I know it's wrong. So yes, in the statement, the, the state chargeback should be fifty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. There's also included in that an illegal real estate component. That's why it's fifty-two thousand, three twenty-nine. The illegal real estate taxes, as were assessed and passed by the previous, at the previous county board meeting, were for forty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents, rounded up to forty-nine. So it's a good catch, Anne, but it is the correct amount.
All right, thank you. Any other questions before we vote? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. All right, next one is eight B two. It's a resolution accepting the opioid litigation settlement. We're, we're going to get about a million, two hundred and forty-five thousand. That is an estimate.
Yes.
And we really don't have much of a choice. There's not, not much, we can't really change anything. We had to, we had to have a meeting after we got the numbers. And that's, that's the reason why we're having this meeting tonight. Now, just looking at the clock, and I realize it's, it's, this meeting's going awful fast, and this litigation is a, a lot of, lot of pages. So maybe we should, we should go through them a little bit closer. We don't wanna have too, too short of a meeting. Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller doesn't wanna hear that. But, but anyway, are there any questions to this? We'll start out with that, because there is a, a lot of information in there. But as, as you probably know, there's not much that we can do about it. We had outside counsel. Supervisor Tripp first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question, but at a Wisconsin Counties Association meeting recently, they discussed this settlement. And one of the participants in the discussion was one of the head lawyers who reached the settlement. And he pos, the guy is from out west somewhere. He raved about Wisconsin's settlement, their part of it. He said, you've got a, a state legislature who had to pass the necessary legislation so that the counties could divide the settlement up in an equitable way. And he said, you're way ahead of most states. It is a good, fair resolution. It plays by all rules. And I came away from that with a pretty good feeling about the settlement overall. I won't pretend to have read the twenty-nine million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand pages. But just from what I, I do know about the settlement, I think we can feel pretty comfortable. And, and I would defer to Nick Lang, of course, to make sure that all the, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. Thank you.
Supervisor Bjork, Gary Bjork.
Thank you, sir. Can the money be spent on anything, or does it have to go to, you know, Human Services Department?
There's certain things that we're going to have to be able to spend the money on. We cannot spend it on anything.
It, it has to be targeted towards programs that are for abatement. And if you, one of the documents that was included in your county board pack, it was a, it's called Exhibit E. And it's, it's identical in both of the settlement agreements, and it has a listing of the kinds of programs and services that are approved. And it's pretty broad, but you can't just use it for anything. But you can use it, you know, to supplement recovery supplies for law enforcement if they encounter an overdose. A O D A treatment issues, connecting people to the treatment that they need. That kind of thing. There's a lot of, a lot of latitude within that, within that kind of narrow focus of abatement of opioid addiction.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Any other questions? Supervisor Leno.
Oh, yeah, I was just kind of wondering, is, is because of the opioid addictions and for the period of time that it was a scourge and still is in the, in our county, are, are we able to reimburse outlays that we incurred through Human Services, through the, the Sheriff's Department, through, you know, the Health Department? Or are they all, all off limits to go back a few years and recoup, recoup?
Well, as a practical matter, because, because the expenditures are connected with a, you know, fiscal year budget, there's not really a mechanism to recoup or specific line items. The, you know, it would revert back to the general fund anyway, which is, in, in concept, that's kind of what's happening. I, I think it's gonna be, it has to be set up in a way so that it's protected. But it will just provide additional funding for services and programs in the future that would, you know, would likely still be offered by the county. And it will help defray the cost of those programs and services.
But we can't go back and, you know, make adjustments in, in our outlier, outliers that we had already made?
No, the, one of the guiding principles, you know, the settlement is a product of a lot of litigation and a lot of settlement discussions. And the courts were heavily involved in it, and the federal court that's out in Ohio consolidated all of these cases. There are literally thousands, thousands of these cases pending before one judge. There are some scattered around the United States. But an overriding factor in pushing toward this was so that it wouldn't be a pure unrestricted monetary dealing for the plaintiffs. In other words, the defendants were going to be expected to pay something. There had to be some strings attached, and the restriction on what it can be used for is one of them. On the flip side, they also are incurring some obligations too. There, there's a restraining order that requires, you know, settling defendants have to share their data. Government officials at the federal level to help analyze the problem and formulate solutions. There, there are some others too there.
Will be, will there be any guidance on that, you know, to us for that type of thing? Or we're kind of on our own to figure it out?
Well, when the funds are received here at the county, or each county, or in, some of them are cities. The state of Wisconsin is going to be participating in the settlement. There will be some oversight from a board, I guess, that's gonna be created to make sure that, that nobody is violating the rules. But it's not gonna be very hard to follow them. Like I said, the, the limitations placed on what the funds can be used for are, they cover a lot of stuff that the Human Services Department already does. And probably CJCC, and maybe the courts, the Sheriff's Department, you know. And so it isn't, it's not gonna be hard to follow the rules. But I, I suspect we may still be accountable from a reporting standpoint, you know, to demonstrate what's been used. I, I think some of that stuff will be forthcoming too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Larry Bjork had his hand up, I believe, first.
Yes, I just had a couple of questions. First of all, how it is similar or dissimilar than tobacco settlement? And then secondly, how are we, or how is Wisconsin, as far as the dollar value received for the settlement? What other states are similar to the dollar value? Did you ever have any of that information as far as, are, are we like Midwestern states? Or are we dollar mouth value to the east or south? Or is there any information on that?
No, no, there's not. As far as comparisons, the tobacco litigation was the state filing claims and saying, don't worry, we know that you've incurred a lot of expenses. And we'll, when this is all over, we'll give you your share. And then when it was all over, the state said, you know, never mind, we'll keep it. And so there was nothing there. This, the counties in Wisconsin anyway, the counties were very quick to move on this. And we, we were able, all the counties were able to, Pope County, I think, only county in the state that didn't sign on as, as a plaintiff. The counties were able to make claims and, and establish a firm, you know, foundation for moving forward before the state became involved. There were, I think it's only through the, the legislation that Supervisor Tripp was talking about that enables the states to participate. And again, it's, that's also founded a little bit on the fact that the court doesn't want to see this to be a cash cow, if you will. That's not restricted. It, it's, the claims are based on damages caused by, you know, deaths, property damage, crime, services that relate to opioid addiction. And so that's what it's supposed to be used for. And states do that stuff too. So they're going to be participating. But I think the lion's share of what comes goes to local governments in Wisconsin.
Supervisor Kneer.
Uh, thank you. I, did I read it right in that this is spread out over eighteen years? Is that correct, Nick?
Yes.
Yes, the distributor defendants is eighteen years. The, the Johnson and Johnson defendants is nine years. And I, you know, we've, I've gotten information that there will be some statewide discussion probably facilitated by the WCA and, and the legal counsel. I think the same attorneys represent all but four or five of the counties. Bringing up the idea of the possibility of monetizing the, the settlement proceeds. In other words, you know, calling J D Wentworth and getting your cash. Now, the restrictions would still apply. But that's something that, you know, that's still only in the sort of conceptual state, and we have no information on that.
Thank you.
Over a period of over years.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr., Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Story first, and then I didn't catch who the other one is, but.
That was Tim Niehoff.
Okay, Tim. Supervisor Story first, then you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just again, I didn't study it that closely. I admittedly just skimmed through it. But as you were talking, it did make me think, I, I would imagine Sarah of CJCC does have a lot of insight into this particular settlement. She's probably looked it over. But does it mean that, like in our drug treatment courts, or any programs that we might want to establish in the future that might relate to drug treatment courts, or people that have made it through the drug treatment court that have opioid involvement, that it would also help them in getting back into society? And, and with programming and different things that she may want to develop? Is that kind of where we could go with this as well, since you say Human Services already does a lot of it?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think that is a, that is a department or a program that would be an excellent candidate for receiving funds to offset some of what they do, or possibly creating new programs or services that, that qualify. And in it, like I said, it's, it's focused on abatement of opioid addiction. But within that narrow focus, there is, there really is a wider range of things that can, you know, carrying around the, the pens that, you know, the stick pens that help if someone is overdosed. Connecting people to treatment and, and helping them beat it, beat addiction. And CJCC does that stuff, just as it's Human Services.
Educational programs?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a question from a little different angle, because, you know, reading through this, it talks about, a lot about what we get. My question is, Nick, what do we give up by signing this?
Uh, my question is, uh, Nick, what do we give up by signing this?
Nothing.
We don't give up the right to sue in the future?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that, yeah, that, that's a standard thing. I mean, we can't make claims against them. We're settling our case. There still are claims pending against other defendants. Um, and, you know, I don't know where those will go. Uh, this is just a handful of, you know, the largest three distributors and then Johnson and Johnson and their subsidiary companies. But yes, uh, part of settling a lawsuit is, I can sue them again for the same thing.
So there are no red flags, so to speak, on that side?
No, I don't think so. I mean, you, you could see by the scale of the documents that are received, that it's very huge. We have attorneys that are representing us. Um, they recommend settlement. It's, like I said, this proposal is a product of years of litigation, years of settlement discussion. And if all of it was overseen and guided by the court. And they're presenting this to us at this time because they believe it's the best deal that can be had. Um, you know, risk, if, 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 for example, we were to decide not to do it, not to settle, we have approximately ninety days to do, you know, we have legal counsel and assuming they are perfectly fine with our decision and want to keep representing us, we, we have about ninety days to do what ordinarily would take nine to twelve months for litigation preparation. And then when, you know, when you go to court, there's always a risk. Um, some of the defendants have, have become insolvent already and filed for bankruptcy protection. Um, there are claims still pending against them and the bankruptcy court is working with the district court and, you know, the multi-district litigation panel to sort out what kinds of claims can be made and what amounts can be made. Plus, you know, there have been instances around the, the state, around the United States uh, where plaintiffs have lost their claims against some of these same types of defendants. I don't know which ones, but I read an article a couple of weeks ago, uh, somebody lost their claim. So the, the manufacturer prevailed. So there, there are risks inherent with litigation and the court entered an order that is probably realistically is bordering on coercive. The judge wants participation. For the state, if participation goes down, the settlement, settlement proceeds that are available to disperse and divide among the participating governments also goes down. So the judge is really trying to incentivize this by making it hard to say no.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Hold on, I guess I don't have a motion. I thought I did. So I need a motion for this.
Mr. Chairman, I saw move, ruble.
Supervisor Anderson moves, Supervisor Steen seconds. All right, now all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Our next meeting will be January nineteenth. There's a broadband webinar tomorrow. Quinn says. Oh, Friday.
Friday, ten to twelve.
You can still sign up for it tomorrow.
Yeah. Yeah, the, yeah, the link that we sent out, uh, will still be active tomorrow. So, uh, go ahead and sign up. It'll be interesting.
And someone asked if, uh, to get the Zoom address to participate, that'll be sent Friday morning, you said?
Either tomorrow afternoon or Friday morning. So if you, if you register, then they will send out a, by email, uh, the Zoom address for the, for the workshop. Yeah.
So if you can't be there for the whole thing, you can kind of go in and out. If you've got an appointment in between, you can come back and catch the rest of it?
I think so, Sheila. Yeah, I, I think that, that's right.
Okay.
Andrew.
Um, supervisors, if you have not had a chance to come pick up your election packets, please do so. Um, they are due back to the county clerk's office by five P M. on January fourth. No exceptions. Um, so please come check out a packet or it's available online. Um, and then get your nominations, um, or if you are intending not to run, I need a notification of non-candidacy no later than next week on Wednesday, the twenty-second. Also, if you have any per diem sheets, please get those to me as soon as possible. You can take a photo of them and email them. Um, you can drop them off. Please include anything for the meetings that you have from now through the end of the year as well. We will hold in good faith that you will attend those meetings. Um, because we do need to close out the, the twenty-twenty year. Please get those to me by Friday morning um, so that Chairman Bartlett can sign those and we can get those processed for your per diems for the end of the year.
Yeah, and that, that saves the clerk's office a lot of work if they don't have to go back. If you try to get paid next year, so. Uh, Supervisor Keithur.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, I'd just like to encourage everybody to read the letter that Chairman Bartlett sent out today from Solar Point Energy. And what it talks about is a, uh, bill that's in the legislature now that would make third-party financing of solar projects or windmills, wind turbines too, legal. Now, right now, we can't do that. If this would be passed, uh, we, it'd make it much easier for the county and cities to put in solar panels because we can finance them from third parties. So I, I encourage you to read the letter and hopefully write to your legislature. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's something that the facilities committee has talked about. Other states, that's legal to do that. And in Wisconsin, it hasn't. It's, it's been kind of a roadblock for municipalities to, to go into having a solar panels, so. Anything else? If not, Merry Christmas to all of you. Have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas and stay safe.